Hello, I'm Ryan Clark, editor of the Modesto Bee. Welcome to today's political forum featuring Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors, District Five candidates vying for the seat vacated by Jim D. Martin, who is stepping down. Here for today's forum, from left to right, Chance Condon, Series City Council member; Tom Halloman, Series City Attorney; and Mike Klein, Series City Council member. Each candidate will have a minute for the opening statement and a minute for the closing statement. In between, we ask questions of the Modesto Bee's editorial board, led by Opinions Editor Gar Sabley. This will be the fourth of the Bee's seven candidate forums and debates over the next few weeks. The primary is March 3rd. Mail in ballots go out in early February. Let's get started.
Great. We'll start with opening statements, after that, questions. They'll rotate the person that starts answering, so that we all have an equal shot at it. We will start from my left to right, first, Chance.
Well, first, I want to thank the Modesto Bee editorial board for having us here today and asking the tough questions. I'm Chance Condon, I live in Series. I'm a Stanislaus State graduate, and I have worked for Opportunity Stanislaus as an economic development specialist and also served on the Series City Council. Last July, Senator Cannella had called me, and he gave me his intention on running for this seat. I immediately endorsed him. But when he dropped out of the race, I felt the need to have a stronger voice for District Five. And I believe I could be that voice for District Five if I'm elected. I want to put the needs of our community first. I want to make a difference for our residents in District Five. And I want to make sure that the West Side, Series and South Modesto are not an afterthought. And I have been walking door to door since October, I've been walking 20 hours a week. I believe that will be the difference in this campaign. And I would be honored to have the votes of the residents in District Five and to the viewers watching. I'd like to have their consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Thank you as well. You know, I love this county. I grew up in Oakdale, and it was like Mayberry back in the day. Played and worked with my grandparents, poultry ranch, and went swimming in Mary Tusher's swimming hole and fishing right across the street. Life was good. I attended public schools here, from kindergarten through junior college. After completing law school, I came back. Since that time, for 20 years, I was on the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees for 20 years. And for the last 25 years, I've represented cities in District Five. I'm proud to have the endorsement of the Series Mayor, Patterson Mayor, Newman Mayor, the Crowe Manning Community Service District President, the Wesley Community Services District President, and the Grayson Community Service District President, as well as Sheriff Dircksey, the Newman Police Officers Association, and recently the sworn deputies of Stanislaus County, as well as Sal Cannella, former mayor and District Five supervisor in this seat, and state Assemblymember, as well as many other school board members and local elected officials. And I hope to receive your support as well.
Very good. Mike?
Hi, I'm Mike Klein. I want to thank Modesto Bee for having this forum for us. So, I'm running for Stanislaus County Supervisor, District Five. I believe I have the experience. I live in Series, I'm a third generation graduate of Series High School. I have three grown children and four grandchildren. I was first appointed to the Series Planning Commission and served four years learning land use and zoning ordinances. I was elected to the Series City Council in 2011, and will be completing my second full term in 2020. During those eight-plus years, I've been a part of numerous changes: balancing the budget, bringing the police and fire department back to more respectable staffing levels, going back to a more traditional management style, with a city manager, police chief, fire chief, and away from a city manager, director of public safety. We've updated our general plan, and with that, we've changed some zoning ordinances for land use for more economical development, without increasing the city's sphere of influence.
Thank you. All right, let's talk about top priorities. Chance, I'm sorry, not Chance. Oh.
Well, my top priorities are public safety, addressing the homeless issue, and economic development, which is arguably the most important, because if you don't have that, you can't address the first two.
Okay. If you, we're asking for your top priority. Mike?
Mine is public safety, each department bringing the staffing levels to a standard where they meet the county's needs. Transportation, public transportation is a need. The city of Series has had to adjust their public transportation because of revenue and the homelessness. You know, homelessness everywhere in this country is a big thing, and homelessness really needs to be addressed and focused.
Very good. Chance?
My main priority if elected is to improve the quality of life for District Five. And how we do that is by ensuring that we have safe and clean neighborhoods, by having strong public safety, economic development, by enticing businesses from over the hill to relocate here. That's what I've been doing with Opportunity Stanislaus. And also, addressing the lack of infrastructure in District Five and in our county guidelines.
Thank you. All right, there's been a proposal for a new dam and reservoir in the Del Portel Canyon just west of Patterson. This would be in your district. Tell us your position on this proposal. We'll start with Mike.
Well, I see no need for the new dam. With the water tables, where they're hurting our water tables and stuff, you know, with adding a new dam, I believe what it's going to do is going to sacrifice a lot of farmland that's on the West Side that is part of Stanislaus County's economic.
Very good. Chance?
Well, I'm going to come in with a fresh perspective, and I'm going to weigh all the options. I understand that there are options for different locations, and I'm going to look at both of those equally. But that being said, I believe the state of California is far too long lagged behind on water storage and water projects. I do think that us as a county, if we can take initiative and do a water project here, that would be good, and that will benefit our ad community and also our residents.
All right. Tom?
I agree, we need, that water's been, it's too tough to get storage. I agree with that. I've met with the opponents of the dam, I have yet to meet with the proponents of the dam, which is basically our agricultural community. So, once I meet with them, I'll take a position. But the concerns need to be seriously addressed in the EIR, and again, it's too tough to get storage, and we shouldn't let one go by when we have a chance to develop it.
All right, let's evaluate the county's efforts to address homelessness, and say what else you would do about it. Chance?
Well, I think we need to have a regional concept where all nine cities can buy in in consolidated efforts. One thing I would like to improve is how we can better finance this issue. Now we can do that is through our cannabis tax dollars. I know that the current county board supervisors have started issuing out cannabis dispensary licenses in non-corporate areas. What we can do to help fund our local homeless issues, so that we aren't fully relying on the state, is by earmarking our cannabis revenue that would go towards homeless prevention, mental health services, life and skill and job training services. And I do think that the Patterson Host House is a great model that we can model ourselves after and also expand upon.
Homelessness? Tom?
Homelessness, well, nobody's figured that out yet. It's kind of amazing that, I'm like a lot of people here, we're in the richest state in the nation, and the most powerful economic country in the world, and we can't seem to figure it out. Well, one of the problems is it's so multifaceted. We have people who have mental health issues, we have people who have addiction issues, we have people who are taking advantage of a criminal lifestyle that they've fallen into, and we have people who just fell off the economic edge. So, obviously, for the mental health and substance abuse issues, we have to have resources and programs for those who want to get into it. And I understand that the state is looking at potentially forcing people who have certain mental health issues into those programs, but they don't know what else to do, because a lot of it's been held to solace yet. Addressing, there's a certain group, again, and nobody wants to talk about this, but they've chosen to take advantage of some of the lax laws and prosecution of those laws to have that be a way of life. So I think the police need every resource that they can to work with that issue, and to also, those issues need to be prosecuted as well.
Very good. Mike, homelessness?
Homelessness, it's, you know, it's been an issue for, ongoing for years. But I think a little more effort and time and money needs to be spent on helping those who want to help themselves. Get into transitional housing, job placement, work with job training, you know, get those people off the streets, then work with people with, you know, continue to work with people with substance abuse, and let them get into the next phase of transition. But, you know, if we don't help the people that want to help themselves first, all we're doing is going around in a vicious circle, and nothing gets completed. You know, Stanislaus County has done an excellent job, partnering up with the city of Modesto and Salvation Army. I think the city of Patterson has done an excellent job with how they're addressing certain things. But, you know, we need to really focus a little more effort on helping those that want to help themselves also, to meet those needs with transitional housing and job training and placement.
Okay. The state water board has proposed to take more water from our rivers, the Stanislaus, the Twalomee, and the Merced. Open question, do any of you not think that that's a good idea?
It's a horrible idea.
I'm against the water, Brad.
Against, against?
Against.
Against, okay. Then take 30 seconds and just tell us why it's a bad idea. We'll start with Tom.
Well, it's a bad idea because it doesn't just hurt agriculture, it hurts everybody here. I got involved in this when I was on the community college board, passed a resolution to oppose it, and went up to Sacramento, was chosen to testify against it, and then that from Resources Committee. It's horrible for agriculture, it's bad for our kid, we can't maintain our schools, and our housing values drop. It's a horrible idea, it's not fair.
Very good. Short answers, Mike?
Well, it affects the Stanislaus County economy, because, you know, our economics is our farming, and it's going to affect our farming. The other thing is, is with cities getting into water, surface water treatment plants because the water tables are diminishing, you know, we have no other way of getting water for agricultural uses and for only own cities, you know, public uses.
Good. Chance?
Well, I don't believe that we should allow a point of bureaucrats to come and steal our water. We need to keep our water and our resources here locally for our agricultural community, and it is lifeblood of our economic engine. Without water, we will not have food, and I will be a champion for preserving our water rights.
Thank you. We've heard about attracting jobs to this area for so many years, so many decades. Do you have anything new that you want to bring to the board? How could you encourage more jobs in this area? Mike?
Well, I think currently, right now, they're on the right track with developing the Crowes Landing Naval Air Base. You know, I believe the ERA is completed, they're going through that, they're trying to find a developer that can work with developing that for economic growth, and bring some of those paying jobs from the Bay Area, because we do have so many people that commute over there. Bring those jobs over here, so the people don't have to commute, their standard of living is going to be better. So I think that's one of the biggest focuses we need to do, is concentrate on that Crowes Landing Naval Air Station.
Very good. And just for our viewers, this is in your district.
Yeah, that's right.
Let's have your view on that, Chance. Or not specifically Crowes Landing, you can talk about.
Of course, of course.
You know, whatever.
Well, I am an economic development specialist on a day-to-day basis, this is what I do. I focus on business retention, expansion, and attraction. And as an elected official, I will aggressively go out and recruit businesses to try to get them to relocate here to Stanislaus County. And how we do that is through, by providing business incentives, tax incentives, and also streamlining permits and projects. That's how we do it. And the Crowes Landing Air Base has been sitting there for a long time. I do believe it's time to put the rubber to the road and finally execute that project. And I have worked with Mr. Boggs and his county economic development team through my capacity of Opportunity Stanislaus. I look forward to working with him and executing that project as an elected official.
Very good. Tom?
Two aspects to that, and one is having an educated workforce. And for 20 years, as a community college trustee, I worked on that, and we had all kinds of training programs to help that, and we've had more people come, particularly out in Patterson, where I worked. And we need to do one other thing better, I think, and that is, for example, and I'm not going to say which one it was, but in Patterson, you know, we had Granger, Amazon, Restoration Hardware come out, and on one Friday afternoon, I was on a phone call at 4:15, and they were, you know, "We've got to have commitment on this, we've got to have commitment." I said, "Look, got my word recorded, if you want to, I will make sure this happens if you come to us," and we made it happen.
Good. Yes, we are, okay. Let's start with a new question.
You started with me, that's, let's go.
Yes. The office that you seek is officially bipartisan.
Yeah.
But it's a well-known fact that Republicans have dominated this Board of Supervisors for actually quite a long time. If you're elected, how would that change? Is, and also, is it a good thing to have, you know, one party rule? What are the benefits, what are the disadvantages, and what would be, you know, any change if you were elected? So, we'll start with Chance.
Well, if I'm elected, I'm elected as a Democrat or Republican, I'm elected to serve the needs of District Five, and I will always put the needs of the community first, before partisanship. I will be a nonpartisan official, and I'm going to always serve the needs and the interests of our community.
Thanks.
I agree with that, and one of the great things about this board is that they work so well together, and I would like to be a part of that. I'm supported by Democrats, Republicans, business, labor, that's just where I come from. And I think the main thing is that we just work well together in the interest of both our districts and overall county, and that's what I would intend to do. I don't see much changing, I don't see partisanship being added into that board, whatever happens. I've worked well with Terry Withrow on matters. I was on the Fair Board with Tom Berio and Vito Chiesa, and we had a good operation there, and if I'm elected, I would continue to have a good operation, because I would work together in the past.
All right. Do you have any different views on that, Mike?
No, I can, I can agree with my two opponents, because, you know, one good thing about local politics, when it comes to city government or county, it is a bipartisanship. And it doesn't matter what party you're affiliated with, that your main focus is to serve the community, serve the citizens that elect you, and move things forward.
All right. The outgoing supervisor in this district is Jim D. Martin. Say something that you appreciate about what he's done, and maybe something that he could have done a little better. Tom?
Well, Jim, everywhere I go, people like Jim because he always shows up. No matter how big or small the event, he always shows up, and that I do appreciate, and I see him at a lot of those, because I've met a lot of them, and I've been going to more since I've run. And if I'm on the board, I would emulate that, something for him to improve on, maybe not be so blunt.
Mike?
Well, yeah, that's one thing about Supervisor D. Martin, you know, Supervisor D. Martin, he totally supports his district, he attends every event that he can, he attends council meetings, in fact, he makes it a point to attend almost every council meeting in his district, he also turns around and makes it a point to attend Water Board, Water District meetings. The good thing about him is he sets the standards, he sets the standards of whoever comes in and takes his spot. And I would agree with Mr. Halloman, that, you know, sometimes, as far as Jim, he could, he could be really blunt and tell you things straightforward, and you have to stop and think about what he's talking about, because you weren't expecting it to be that forward.
Very good. Chance?
I would, I would agree with both my opponents. I think Supervisor Jim D. Martin has set an incredible standard of community outreach and service. It's going to be very hard for either one of us to fill those shoes. I do believe I'm the best person to fill those shoes, though, because I will be assessable and proactive in the district, and I would also echo them. Supervisor Jim D. Martin does not hold his tongue. When he says something, he means it, and I do appreciate that.
Okay. I think you all spoke already fairly well of the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors. Let's give them a letter grade, A to F. Mike?
I would give them an A.
Chance?
I would give them a B.
And Tom?
I would give them an A minus. I commend them for their efforts.
Let's have you explain those, and we'll give you 30 seconds each. We'll start with Mike.
Well, I think, you know, each one of the supervisors have their strengths, and they, they move on their strengths, and the rest of the board listens to what they have to say and their input. You know, you've got a couple of them that are really involved with the homeless, and try to help the homeless, you have one that's involved with the water rights and air quality, another one that does transportation, you know, and they all have different involvement. And I think they do an excellent job communicating that with each other.
Your grade was a little lower, Chance. Explain your view.
I gave them a B. I do believe they have made some strides in dealing with the homeless issue. I do believe they've done great with staffing for Sheriff's Department and also standing up for our water rights. But frankly, it's a little easier to do those things when you have a majority of the tax revenue. The county does get a majority of the tax revenue as compared to the cities. And something that I would have a different perspective on is having more equity between our tax sharing, between our cities and our county. That will make our cities stronger, and that will overall benefit our county as a whole.
Okay. Tom, what's your grade again?
I said A minus, just because, I would never give myself anything higher than A minus, it brings room for improvement, but I commend them for their efforts in the homeless issue, the budget reserve that they built up, and also for leading the charge along with Assemblyman Gray on the water grab. They put together the largest rally in Sacramento last year to oppose the water grab, and that's a place with a lot of rallies to compete with, but they did that, and it's a very important argument, and I commend them for that.
All three of you work with the city of Series, and specifically the city council. Tom is the city attorney, the other's your city councilman. Let's give a letter grade to the city of Series City Council. We'll start with Tom. I'm sorry. Yes?
Yeah, well, I'm just an employee, not the employer, so I don't think in my place they give a grade on this one, since I have two of my bosses on both sides of me. But I will say I would give them a very, what that grade would be would be very well, because Series does a lot of things very well. I made it my home, I chose to raise my kids there.
Okay, good. Mike?
Well, you know, since I've been on the council, I think there's been a lot of improvement. I would, I would move it up to a B. There's still a lot of improvement that needs to be done. You know, one of the things that really need is a little bit more stronger economical growth, doing some infill of our, our areas where we can have, you know, some businesses come in. So I think we can do a little bit better, better at that.
Very good. Chance?
I would give it a C. And the reason why it is so low is because...
C for Series?
C for Series, C for Chance.
And C for Condon, yeah, okay.
The reason why it is so low is because our, our budget is not balanced. We have a $1.5 million deficit with our community center. I did offer to pay down that debt, like alleviating the city council's health insurance, the cost that taxpayers over $100,000 a year. So that is why the grade is so low. Now, with that being said, I do think we have made some strides in hiring for public safety. We have turned a once-closed-down fire station into a regional training facility, and we established a beautification committee that I was proud to spearhead.
All right. We've said that each of you is from Series, that's one little corner of this very large district, in fact, it's geographically the largest district in Stanislaus County. What are you doing to reach out to everybody who's not in Series? All those people, Patterson, Newman, Wesley, Grayson, Crowes Landing? Mike?
I have been out to Patterson and Newman, I've attended their city council meetings. You know, I was in grocery sales for over 27 years, and my accounts have been City of Patterson, Newman, I've been even into Gustine. So the West Side was really my focus as far as, you know, what I could do for them, help them economically as far as in grocery sales, and learn, learn their business, and, you know, what they focus on. So, you know, I've been out there in the West Side contacting people.
Good. Chance?
Well, what I'm doing right now is walking door to door. Like I mentioned in my opening statement, I've been walking for 20 hours a week, going door to door, meeting with the voters at their doorstep to discuss the issues that they face on the West Side and in Series. And I also did the same when I worked for Assemblyman Adam Gray. I have participated in Abricot Fiesta, the parade. I am currently on Colonel Azavito's Research Center as a board member over in Patterson. And I believe that the West Side specifically has felt like they've been left out of the equation, and that's why it is so important to have a strong advocate for all of us in District Five on the county level.
Okay. Tom?
Excuse me, while I'm walking as well, and people, people know me when I knock on the door, I've been over there for 25 years, and the people who know me know that I won't forget them, so that's why I have almost every single endorsement from the West Side, and I'm proud of that.
Very good. All right, the South County Corridor is a proposed expressway that would run from Highway 99 near Turlock to link up with I-5, Interstate 5, near Patterson. They have settled on Patterson, haven't they? I believe so. Does anybody not think that this is a good idea? Open question.
I think it's going to be great for economic development.
Let's have you take 30 seconds and say why.
I'll start it. I think it's, I think it's going to be a good idea. You know, with the development that Patterson has had out there of I-5, with the businesses out there, with Granger and Amazon and a few, just to name a few, you know, with the amount of manpower and jobs and opportunities are out there, you know, it's going to be easier for people to get to work. You know, it saves a trip way up north when you want to go to the Bay Area. I think that, you know, overall economic growth with what the potential is to bring.
Thank you. Short answers. Chance?
Sure. Like I mentioned, I think it's going to be great for economic development, and I fully support regional transportation issues, and will better connect the West Side of the county to the East Side.
Good. Tom?
I agree, anything to help the movement of, movement of people and goods is beneficial, and also it's a perfect link with the Crowes Landing Naval Air Station, and, you know, I think I'm uniquely positioned to help make that happen. Because I work with Patterson, Newman, and then I'm on the board, I think I'm uniquely positioned to bring people together, and there's a way to do that. County needs sewer and water from Patterson, Patterson needs certain complements with their development. Newman wants to be the executive housing home to executives working there, so that's a thing we need to have to draw business here, so I think it's a nice link, and I fully support it.
Good. All right, well, not everything is perfect in Stanislaus County government. What department needs a little bit of work, and what would you do? Chance?
I think the DA's office. I think we need to focus on retention and staffing issues that are facing our DA's office. And also, I do want to give a good highlight to our Veterans Service Office. I do think they're doing a good job. I've worked with Brian Kegley in the past, and I worked for Assemblyman Adam Gray addressing veteran issues, and I'd like to continue that and make that better for our veterans.
Very good. Tom?
I agree, the district attorney's office. Let me give you one specific example. Back in about 2014, we asked the district attorney, asked city attorneys, to allow us to prosecute certain of these quality of life crimes. She said no, and that you just needed to give us money, more money for us to prosecute them. Well, if I'm on Board of Supervisors, I'm going to address that day one, and I was saying, it's not going to cost any more money, we're just going to elect the city attorneys who are, excuse me, qualified and will be most motivated to take care of this, to do it. Thank you.
Thanks. Mike?
I also think it's the district attorney's office. When you're trying to help out the homeless and give people a better way of life, what we're doing is, all we're doing is encouraging repeat offenders that know that they're not going to get prosecuted, and they're not going to want to help themselves, because they know that nothing's going to happen if you don't get prosecuted for anything that you steal under $900. So we've got repeat offenders, keep on repeating, they're homeless, and they have, they have no way or no desire to change their lifestyle, because there's no need to.
Very good. Thank you. Chance mentioned in one of his answers, the cannabis revenue. I, we're wondering if you agree, the Board of Supervisors cannabis policies are one, some of the most progressive in this area. Do you agree with them, and why or why not? Tom?
I agree with them, and I think it's a good idea to put most of the money in the law enforcement, because, not just because cannabis businesses do not create more crime, actually it's been found that they provide safer areas because they have guards on duty 24 hours and increased lighting, so that's not the problem. The problem was with the illegal grows. These illegal grows are dangerous to our neighborhoods, because they're in our neighborhoods, they're not just out in nowhere, and they blow up, so we need to be able to respond to the hazardous materials issues, and we need to give the law enforcement every tool they need to fight them. And again, the District Attorney needs to prosecute them, uh, once they're arrested.
Very good. Cannabis policies? Mike?
Well, with City of Series, we have two cannabis dispensaries that have been good for our revenue. We do not allocate certain percentage to go to public safety or, or any other forms of, of, of the government and departments. For the simple reason is, they're already in the percentage of whatever the general fund is. So when you get the cannabis revenue and you allocate it, if it goes down, then they're losing out. So you're better off to just keep the standards. And if they're standards for social services and they're getting twenty percent of the revenue, they're gonna get twenty percent of the cannabis revenue. That's what's gonna be basically allocated for them. So I, I think that, you know, you, you're gonna increase our revenue anyway by, with the cannabis revenue you're gonna get.
Too bad we don't have Jim DiMartini here to set you all straight, but that's fine. Chance?
Uh, I'm only gonna be supportive of cannabis dispensaries and licensing of those if it best benefits our community. And as, and the best thing to do is earmark it for public safety and hiring more sheriff deputies, and also putting it toward mental health services and homeless prevention. That's what I've done on the Series City Council. I've advocated for earmarks that will go directly to hiring, uh, new police officers for our city. And I have been opposed to cannabis, uh, votes because it, it's just going to the general fund. And my worry with that is that it is only gonna increase the salaries of our administrators.
All right. Thank you. Short answers here. In the race for state senate, do you support Manny Graywell, Susan Egman, Jim Ridenour, Jesus Andrade, or Kathy Garcia? Mike?
Uh, my decision is not made yet.
Gents?
Uh, respectfully, as a nonpartisan official, I don't endorse any partisan races.
Tom?
I support Manny Graywell.
Would you like to give a fifteen-second reason why?
I think he's been the voice of reason on the municipal city council. He's a businessman. He has many different connections to all the communities within, uh, District Five. I know he's well-respected, uh, in the area I grew up in over in Oakland.
Very good. Another short answer. In the race for county supervisor District One, do you support Buck Condit, Mike Van Winkle, or Bill Zawoski? Chance?
Captain Buck Condit. I believe his thirty-two years of experience in public safety will be a valuable asset for the county board.
Very good. Uh, for our viewers, that is your, um, first cousin once removed.
That's correct.
Very good. Tom?
You know, I, I know and could work well with all of them on the board. I, I do not have a favorite candidate in that race.
And Mike?
And I support Mike Van Winkle. I've had numerous conversations with him when it comes to, you know, local government, city government, and, and how we do things. I've been on the Stanislaus County Council of Government with him. And we've had a few conversations, and, uh, I support Mike Van Winkle.
Thank you. Let's, uh, do short answers on this one, too. Tell us something that you appreciate about each of your opponents. Tom?
Well, I appreciate that they have chosen to engage in elected public service, whether it's Mr. Condit's one year on the city council or Mr. Klein's eight years on the city council. I commend them for that because it's not a fun job. Uh, you get a lot more complaints than pats on the back.
Okay. So the same thing for both of them, huh? Mike?
Well, you know, I gotta, I gotta say that I commend, you know, Chance Condit for, uh, his vision. Uh, you know, his way of thinking. Um, you know, sometimes it, it makes me, uh, think of things a little different. So I, I commend him on his way of thinking. Um, you know, I commend, uh, Mr. Hallahan for, you know, his service. Uh, being a city attorney for all these different municipalities. Um, I think that, you know, that, that in itself, it helps out, uh, for knowledge of different aspects in the cities and how they're growing.
Thank you. Gents?
Uh, Mr. Klein, uh, has, comes from a great family. I really enjoy him and his company and working together on the Series City Council. And, uh, his wife was actually my second-grade librarian at Carol Fowler Elementary School. So he, he does come from a great family, I have a lot of respect for him. Mr. Hallahan has been a joy to work with. And I appreciate his public service and his dedication, and I look forward to working with him in the future as well.
Whatever happens here, the three of you won't work together anymore, will you? Someone will be elected and move on. Well, I don't know, you-
It's unconfessable.
Tom, would you continue to be City Attorney for Series if, if elected? We have talked about homelessness, a related issue is affordable housing. Tell us your ideas on how to increase affordable housing in Stanislaus County. Gents?
Well, I really believe it comes down to a supply and demand issue. The demand is there, but we need to provide the supply for our men and women to live here and to make sure that it is affordable for our residents here locally and not just for the Bay Area residents who are coming here. And also, those who build our homes should also be able to afford to live in those homes. So we need to increase our supply and especially in a good economy.
Tom?
Uh, for low-income housing, affordable housing, I think that, uh, any subsidy should come from the government or private individuals who support that. It should not be put on the back of market home buyers, you know, that, uh, young family trying to buy their first house or has, have one, three kids instead of one, trying to move up. They should not have to pay for that. Uh, now, for them to get housing, what we need to do is go back to, uh, your other question. That's develop, uh, local living wage, good-paying jobs here in Stanislaus County.
And Mike?
Well, I, I think it's a combination of both my opponents. You know, it's supply and demand, but it's also creating jobs that, that have a livable wage. But, you know, for me, the third part is, it's what the, the state has sort of put into regulations or what are, what are out there that's gonna put some of these affordable houses out of the market with, with standardized sprinklers being put in, with solar being put in, things like this. All adds to the cost, the cost of, of, of the building material. So, you know, it's, it's certain standards that are implemented that are going to make certain things out, outreach.
Okay. We've appreciated, uh, our time with you. Um, we like to know what sets you apart from your opponents. Why should voters consider you instead of these other two fine gentlemen? Tom?
Well, I think it's my decades of the, the fortune experience working in local government. Um, you know, I, I have a reputation for working well with everybody. And I think that's a very important thing to take to the county level because we need to be, the county and the cities need to be partners, not rivals, as we go forward. Because as we've talked about with the water issue, uh, we need to band together to, uh, fight off some of these battles we're gonna have with the state.
Good. Mike?
I think it's my experience, my experience on the Series City Council, working with the budget, working with staffing levels, learning things, setting the standards for the can- cannabis dispensaries within the city, also being open-minded, uh, being approachable. You know, I, uh, I'm very approachable. I have half the police officers in town. I have their cell numbers, they have my cell numbers. Uh, same with the fire department. If there's an issue they wanna talk about, you know, I think I'm very approachable. Uh, I live and work within the, within the city. Uh, the citizens know me. Uh, my kids were the fourth generation to go to the Series High School. So I'm very approachable, uh, and, uh, you know, very experienced.
Very good. Chance?
I think there's a various, uh, differences between these two gentlemen. I do believe Mr. Hallahan has more experience in running for different offices. Uh, and he hasn't had to take the tough votes on the Series City Council. Me and, uh, Mr. Klein actually share a voting record of differences, such as voting for an unbalanced budget. That's what he did. I voted against the budget because we're under one-point-five-million-dollar deficit with our community center. And also, uh, the only law enforcement agency that has worked with all of us, all these candidates, has endorsed me in that Series Police Officer Association. And I'm proud of that endorsement. And, uh, but I believe those are some of the differences.
Very good. Uh, Tom, your name was mentioned. Do you care to rebut?
No. I'll mention it in my close.
All right. We'll move to closing statements then, one minute each. We're gonna reverse the order just on this one, and we'll start with Mike.
Well, I'm running for county supervisor District Five. I think, believe I have the experience with being on the Series City Council for the last eight years, working on budget, working on staffing levels, uh, working on economical growth and, uh, you know, with the cannibal, cannabis dispensaries. You know, I have, uh, stayed true to my commitment to the City of Series, uh, and I have integrity. So I would, uh, hope that you would support me and vote for me for your next county supervisor District Five.
Very good. Thank you, Mike. Tom?
Yeah, I'm not gonna mention my qualifications and all the support that I have in this. I do wanna lead you along. The county's in very good shape right now. That's not gonna last forever. So you need somebody with knowledge, experience, a heart and integrity, uh, to make the right and the tough decisions. And I have that, I've done that before. Two thousand nine during the economic downturn, while I was on the community college board, I had an auditorium room full of people screaming for us to not make a single cut. That was not responsible. It was a tough decision, but I voted to make the cuts we had to have. And it was for the betterment of the district. We're gonna do the same for the county.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Gents?
I'm running for District Five to address the needs of our community, whether it's lack of infrastructure. Uh, we have a lot of contaminants in our water, whether it's arsenic, nitrates, or chromium six. That needs to be addressed. And also to provide economic development for our citizens so they don't have to wake up at three AM and do a commute over the hill and do a full shift and come back at midnight. We need to have ops here so that they can work locally and raise a family. We have severe quality-of-life issues as a county as a whole, but specifically in District Five. And I want to address those issues. I do want, I do believe in constituent service. I wanna be assessable, I will be proactive, and I will be an independent voice. I'm someone who's not afraid to ask the tough questions and go against the grain when need be. And that's what I will do as a county supervisor, and it'd be honored to have your vote come March third.
Very good. We here at the MMSO B really respect those of you who put yourself out there[1765.22]